Let's try this again. Call to order, the September 5th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. First item here is the Pledge of Allegiance. Will Commissioner Bartow lead us?
Stand and pledge your right hand over your heart.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item. Staff, roll call, please.
All commissioners are present with the exception of Vice Chair Harris, who is excused this evening.
Thank you. All right, our next item is public comments. This is the time when we typically take public comments that are items that are not on the agenda, whether typically within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any public comments this evening? All right, seeing none. Moving on to the next item, requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
There are no requests tonight.
All right, thank you. So, next item, consent items. Moving on to those consent items, let's see, the minutes of August 22nd, 2024. Would anyone from the audience like to speak on the minutes from August 22nd? All right, seeing none. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve with Mr. Mosher's edits.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, call for vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, next item. Item two, under public hearing, is the Wild Strawberry Cafe Outdoor Dining Area Expansion. This is PA 2022-309. Site location is 240 Newport Center Drive, Suite 100. Staff, do you have a presentation for us?
I do. Thank you, Chair. My name is Jocelyn Perez. I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division. And the first public hearing item for your consideration this evening is a conditional use permit to expand the outdoor dining area of Wild Strawberry Cafe. Wild Strawberry Cafe is located at 240 Newport Center Drive. It is one of nine buildings within a business-
Sorry, Jocelyn, one second. Can we get them on the screens here? Or do we need to hit a power button or anything?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Here we go. Thank you. Sorry, Jocelyn.
Of course. All right, so Wild Strawberry Cafe is located at 240 Newport Center Drive. 240 Newport Center Drive is one of nine buildings within a business center known as Design Plaza. Uses within Design Plaza are primarily professional office, but there's also medical office, personal services, retail. Some notable tenants within that plaza include FedEx Office, Spa Gregory's, and Muldoon's Irish Pub up there at the northeast corner of the Design Plaza. Land uses surrounding Design Plaza are, once again, primarily professional offices. There is residential to the west and the east, and Fashion Island is in proximity of the project site up there to the north. Wild Strawberry Cafe is located within Suite 100. It is a ground-level suite, a corner suite, with frontage along the south side of the building and the east side of the building there. A restaurant was originally approved for that suite in 2004 to allow for a restaurant with 300 square feet of what was then known as net public area. That's areas where customers get access in the restaurant, so including the counter where they order and where they can dine. An additional limit was placed on the number of seats. Later, in 2004, there was a subsequent approval to reduce the total number of seats, but in exchange, grant them 75 square feet of outdoor dining. Wild Strawberry Cafe took over the suite in 2011 and made no changes to the interior of the restaurant. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Wild Strawberry placed additional tables and chairs on the outside of the space within a covered walkway. And that was done without the benefit of an emergency temporary use permit or without a limited-term permit. When Wild Strawberry approached the city in 2021 to obtain a minor use permit to add a Type 41 beer and wine alcohol license, the city became aware of the expanded outdoor dining. And one condition of approval in that minor use permit was to shrink the outdoor dining back to that original 75-square-foot approval. However, given the success of the outdoor dining, Wild Strawberry applied for a conditional use permit to make that outdoor dining permanent. And so that's the project we're here for this evening. It will make the areas that have been used for outdoor dining permanent. There will be no changes to the interior of the restaurant. There will be one patio, approximately 480 square feet along the east side of the building there where alcohol will- the beer and wine will be allowed to be consumed. And there'll be an additional 180, approximately 180 square feet of outdoor dining along the south side of the building there. Customers will still be able to access the adjacent buildings and suites through the path of travel that I've added an arrow there to demonstrate. So the nuance of the project is that there's two outdoor dining areas, one where alcohol service will be allowed and one area where it won't be. And that's to address a feasibility issue. The patio featured in this photo is where there's no alcohol service proposed. There's no room to place the tables, chairs, and barriers required by ABC to have alcohol service there. So if those barriers were placed, customers would have to walk into the street, and that's not allowed. So the simple solution is to just not serve alcohol in that patio. This photo shows the outdoor dining patio where alcohol service will be allowed. It's off to the right of that screen. It's a little dark on this screen, but the area is delineated with planters. Another reason I have selected this photo of the outdoor dining area is I'd like to highlight that there is a very wide path maintained outside of the outdoor dining area where customers will still be able to access the interior of Design Plaza. Staff had received a comment about one of the conditions of approval referencing an accessible path be maintained. And so that condition was intended to apply to customers accessing the patio area, not to this walkway, which is maintained. As part of the project, there's no permanent construction. There's just the placement of tables and chairs and umbrellas. So no building permit is required. In order to implement the project, a 10-space parking waiver is required. Wild Strawberry, highlighted in yellow there, is adjacent to an area known as Parking Zone 1. Staff conducted parking counts earlier this year on April 3rd and 10th. Staff found that the peak parking demand occurred on April 3rd during the lunchtime hour. And even during that peak demand, there were still 35 parking spaces available within Zone 1. Staff would like to discuss that, in addition to there still being available parking, this restaurant benefits from having quite a few office workers in close proximity to the site. So there are a lot of users that walk to the site and don't drive. Given that the patio is already in operation, staff doesn't anticipate approval of this project generating any additional demand as the patio is already operational. The counts were reviewed by the city traffic engineer, and they were accepted as a valid indicator that there is sufficient parking to allow the permanent expansion of this outdoor dining area. The project was reviewed by city departments, including Public Works, Building, Fire, Code Enforcement, and the Police Department. There were no issues raised with the project. There are a variety of conditions of approval that should help ensure that the restaurant continues to operate in a way that complements the surrounding uses and isn't disruptive. The restaurant has modest hours, closing by 6:00 p.m. They're limited to their beer and wine license. There's no live entertainment allowed. And as I mentioned earlier, I'd like to clean up one of the conditions of approval. There's a reference to the accessible path should be maintained through the covered walkway. That should just be, an accessible path shall be maintained because you need an accessible path to access the outdoor dining areas. And then in addition, it's been made clear that, through the conditions of approval, that none of the seating is allowed to block that access into the restaurant or the exit. Staff is recommending approval of the projects. So the next steps would be to conduct the public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA, and adopt the resolution that will supersede all the existing approvals for this site. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. We have the business owner from Wild Strawberry here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jocelyn. Appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Chair Rosin, thank you. Ms. Perez, thank you for the presentation. I was curious how many, or how often, if any, the operator has special events at the property and in the restaurant?
There are no special events proposed.
Got it, thanks.
Commissioner, say.
Just curious, has the landlord commented on this? Are they okay with the expansion?
The landlord signed the application to submit for the conditional use permit.
Okay. And another one, the planters at the end of the alcohol area, or right now, there's just two little trees or whatever. Is that going to be a solid planter so that people can't really walk in and out over that? Is that a condition? I didn't, I was looking for it. It shows a solid planter, so I was just wondering.
The planter design is subject to the approval of ABC, and there is a condition of approval in the resolution that ABC has to approve the layout. So if they're satisfied with it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a similar question. I actually thought that the requirement was for a fence as opposed to a planter. And I suppose if the planter is solid as opposed to the several planters that they have, do we know if that's, that's an ABC issue, it sounds like?
It is an ABC issue. In my experience, I think with different projects, ABC has approved various different fencing or planters or what have you.
Okay. Great, thank you. Commissioners, starting with, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Question for you. Are the hours on the conditions of approval, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., are those the hours currently or is that a modified hour?
Those hours represent the original approval for the restaurant. My understanding is that Wild Strawberry typically closes a little bit earlier.
And does it typically open at 7:00 or is that?
I could let the business owner respond to that one.
Yeah, at that time, okay, thank you.
More questions, commissioners?
My apologies, this is so, oh.
We'll bring you up in a second. Okay, commissioners. So I guess somewhere near my left. Any ex parte communications?
None.
None for me?
None.
I've met and talked with the owners of the cafe, that's about it.
None. None.
Okay. Then let's open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Might be a good time just to answer that one question, if you'd like, about the hours.
Sorry, do you have an application or do you have a presentation?
Do you have a presentation?
Or any words you want to, or any words? Okay.
I don't have anything. This is so intimidating for me. This is my first time logging in here.
We may have one or two questions, and you'll be good to go.
While we have you there, have you reviewed the conditions of approval and agree with them?
Yes, I have, and I do agree with them.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
So just back to the hours. Are the normal hours of operation 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
Normal operations are-
Like Monday through Friday?
Monday through Saturday, 7 to 4.
7 to 4.
And Sunday's 9 to 3.
Great, thanks.
Okay, no more questions? All right, then, does anyone from the audience wish to speak? Sit down. Okay, seeing none? Nope. Oh.
I put in a card. My name is Keith Dawson. I've been a resident of Newport Beach since, or Corona del Mar, actually, since 1971. And there's a group of about 14 of us that go to Wild Strawberry every Tuesday and Thursday for the last several years. And based on the original permit, if we couldn't even go there with the amount of seats that are on the original permit, and if the outdoor dining or the outdoor seating is not permitted, we're going to have to go somewhere else. And that's not going to be easy on the applicant. And I think Wild Strawberry is an amazing asset to this community. I'm sure everybody here has been there. It's right across the street. And I did see Mr. Mosher's comment regarding something about rain and walking outside under the, over, whatever the cover is. But the reality is, unfortunately for Wild Strawberry, is when it's raining, we don't go there. You know, so they lose that business, but that means that that access is open. So I think I urge you to approve, approve the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers? All right, seeing none. Applicant, any questions, comments? Okay. Then staff have any comments for the record? All right, seeing none. Close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission for discussion. Commissioners?
I'll make a discussion or a comment. I've been to the cafe, I don't know, 50 times plus, plus. In my experience, I've never seen a parking issue. I find the operator to be very hands-on. I find the operator to be very attentive and very proactive. I think an approval of this would be consistent with a proper operator, a good demeanor, consistent with what the community would like to see, and would benefit a small business, which we all feel we should support in this community. That's my position.
All right, just quickly. My experience with this particular location is that it seems well-parked, and I've never had any kinds of issues with that. So with hearing that this is a great operator, I'd be inclined to be supportive as well. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the item as drawn up.
And second?
I'll second. Either one, whatever. I'll second.
We should say lean a second. All right, let's call for vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to the applicant. All right, next item. Item number three, Uptown Newport Development Agreement, Second Amendment. This is PA 2024-0078. The site location is 4311 Jamboree Road. This is north of Jamboree between MacArthur and Birch. Staff, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, Chair Rosin. Hi, Memorial Deputy Director. I'll be presenting this item on behalf of our contract principal planner, Rosalyn Hung. This item is a request to amend the development agreement for the Uptown Newport project. Specifically, the request is to allow for excess park-in-lu fee credits to be used towards their public benefit fee obligations for any residential projects within the development. Provide a little bit of background. The project is located in the airport area of the city along Jamboree, just north of MacArthur Boulevard. This is a conceptual site plan of the overall project. When we talk about the Uptown Newport Plan Community, it's a 25-acre mixed-use development. It calls for the development of two 1-acre parks, up to 1,244 units, and 11,500 square feet of retail. We're currently in Phase 1. You can see the delineation of Phase 1 with the red outline. So far, within Phase 1, the One Uptown Newport Apartments has been constructed. That's 558 rental units. The Park House Residences is a 30-unit condo project. That's near completion and very close to final. And then we have the Uptown Newport Residences, another 60. It's a 60-unit condo project, which has been entitled but not yet permitted. And then we have the Phase 1 Park, which has been completed and improved. Phase 2 isn't slated to start until at least 2027, when the Jazz facility shuts down, and then that site can be redeveloped. As part of the development agreement, there's a number of terms. Each residential unit's required to pay a public benefit fee. It was initially established as $32,000 a unit, but there's CPI adjustments, so the current rate is approximately $44,000 a unit. Parkland dedication and improvements to the park were included, including the construction and improvement of the two 1-acre parks. 102 affordable housing units are to be provided. And then, within the development, private open space and publicly accessible, like, peseos are to be provided. Breaking down the park dedication requirements a little bit more, the project overall is required to provide a total of 13.62 acres of parkland. They're going to provide, or they have, well, part of the requirement is they provide two acres of actual public parks, improve it. And then the remaining 11 and 1/2 acres is to be paid through a park-in-lu fee, which comes out to approximately $20,000 a unit. So for each residential unit's constructed, that's the fee that's required to be paid for parks. However, there are credits that can be provided. Those credits include costs associated with the construction and improvements of the parks. Up to 30% of publicly accessible, like, recreational open space that peseos through the project can be credited back. And then they're also entitled to, or able to receive 20% of their private recreational amenities back as a credit. And those could be like the pool, their clubhouse, their gyms, things like that. And then, just to clarify for the record, the staff report indicates it's a 30% credit, but that's incorrect. So it's correctly a 20% credit. The city's approved two credits so far. So in 2017, associated with the One Uptown Newport Apartments project, a credit of $7.1 million was given. And then more recently, in 2021, as part of the Park House and Residences Condo Project, credit in the amount of $2.6 million was granted. After the calculation of the required park-in-lu fees, there's going to be a residual credit of $824,000 approximately that can carry over into Phase 2. And so that's the way the development agreement and our code currently works. And on the bottom of the slide, you can see some of those improvements that they're able to get a credit for, and that includes the public park. The peseo's in the middle, and so that's accessible to the public. And then you can see the pool up for one of the projects, and that's a private recreational amenity. And so really, if this amendment is approved tonight, what it creates is an allowance for the city to apply the park-in-lu fee credit towards their public benefit fees. And that would be established through a staff approval request. So it's not automatic. It would still go through a process with staff, through a staff approval to document the credit. With that $824,000, that's that current residual, as currently could be applied, approximately $300,000 could be applied towards the Park House Residences public benefit fee contributions, which is currently approximately $1.3 million. And then approximately $600,000 of that residual could be applied to the future Uptown Newport Residences condo project, which is estimated about $2.6 million. And so that concludes my presentation. Our recommendation is to conduct the public hearing. Find the DA amendment to be, have been addressed in the previously adopted SEQA documents. And then also, just to correct for the record, what we're asking the Planning Commission is to recommend approval to the City Council.
All right, thank you, Hemi. Appreciate that. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question. Are there any other park fees in the future that these credits could be used for? Are we just accelerating the use of it?
Essentially accelerating the use of it. So they would be carried over at Phase 2. So one, once, you know, Jazz ceases operation, there's a new development within that Phase 2. Those new units are going to be required to contribute park-in-lu fees. And so these credits could have been applied towards that future phase.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. Start on my left again with any ex parte communication?
None.
I had a conversation with the applicant's consultant.
None.
None.
None. I spoke with the applicant.
All right. Then let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Good evening, Chair Rosin, members of the Planning Commission, city staff. My name is Brian Rupp. I'm the Executive Vice President of Shop Off Realty Investments. Thank you for taking the time tonight to consider our request. As staff reported, this is simply a request to allow these excess park fee credits to be used now rather than wait till Phase 2. Excuse me, I'm a little out of breath. So the approximately $825,000 in park fees was generated simply by the fact that we built a 1-acre park, built peseo improvements, we built private recreational amenity improvements. And primarily, the park construction is the reason for those excess park fees. What we'd like to have is be able to apply those park fee credits, which staff has agreed those credits are available. We'd like to use those now against our public benefit fees for the Park House Residence condominiums and the 60-unit condominium project that are in process right now. The Park House condos are just wrapping up. Very proud of what we've done there and what we've accomplished here in the city. Selling condominiums for $2 to $5 million in the airport area was something that we're really proud of. Really proud of the execution as well. So that's a simple request. I think I want to make it clear that today, the project has generated over $20 million in fees to the city and will continue to generate tens of millions of dollars in fees. So we've built 488 units in the Uptown project. 458 apartments, including 92 affordable units, 30 luxury condominiums. No one else has delivered housing in the airport area. So I think, again, that's something we're very proud of. We're very happy to be partners with the city on this project and move this forward. When we did the apartments, we paid over $17 million in public benefit fees to the city. We paid $2.9 million in park fees to the city. And we dedicated this 1-acre public park. It's a city park, it's open to the public, but we maintain it at our expense. So I think that's another benefit to the city. So again, these credits, we simply want to be allowed against a public benefit fee for the current projects. Those current projects will still generate approximately $3 million in public benefit fees to the city. I'm available for any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone from the audience wish to speak on this item?
Chair Rosin, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. To the extent I understand this, the applicant is saying that they have been overcharged for park fees. And essentially, they're due a refund because I don't think the city is allowed to charge a bigger impact fee than the actual impact. And they're kind of asking to use their refund now rather than in Phase 2. But my question is, if the development agreement was not amended, what would happen at the end of Phase 2? Because presumably, they will have credits there also. So doesn't the city have some mechanism for refunding overcharges? Or would the applicant lose those at the end of Phase 2 without the amendment? So I have no real problem with this, although I did, in writing, question perhaps the current assessment of how big their refund is because there is the claim of 30% credit for 30% of any open space that they created that would be open to the public during the daylight hours. And my problem with that, that's kind of a statement of policy that was in our general plan. But we do have a more specific ordinance about park dedication and what credits can be applied to that. And ordinances require a more thorough adoption process. So I'm not sure that a statement in a general plan overrides what the ordinance says. And the ordinance doesn't mention any credit for such things. So I have a little problem with that. But I don't think I have a problem with them wanting to use their refund now rather than later. But I am wondering, what hap, what, without the amendment, what would happen to the refund at the end of the project? without the amendment, what would happen to the refund at the end of the project? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Are there any other comments? The applicant like to respond to that?
Thank you, uh, Brian Rupp, with Shopoff Realty Investments. So, I mean, again, this is simply, it's, it's not a matter of being overcharged. We haven't been overcharged. We just have excess fee credits available for the park construction costs, so that's simply the court, the request. And having a development agreement with Uptown Newport, with the master plan community, that is a very simple mechanism to allow us to allow for those park fee credits, consistent with the municipal code, consistent with the parkland dedication requirements.
Thank you.
Okay. Staff have any comments?
Um, I, I was just going to add, uh, that to Mr. Celine's point, the fees could be used, or the unused credit could be used towards Phase Two. DA's are different in, from regular DIFs in that, um, typically with DIFs, you have to refund if there is an unused portion, but, um, since this was adopted by way of a development agreement, um, that would not necessarily be the case, but again, it could be applied to Phase Two.
Got it. Thank you. All right, we'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission. So commissioners, any comments? No comments? Okay, so how about, do we want to have, uh, maybe a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution, um, PA 2024-0078.
Great. Do we have a second?
One second.
All right, call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to the applicant. Next item, item number four, amendment to the six-cycle housing element. This is PA 2022-0245. Site location is citywide. Staff, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Rosin and Planning Commissioners. Ben Zadiba, Planning Manager, I'll provide a very brief presentation for you on this matter. Happy to field questions thereafter. Uh, so just by way of background, very briefly, um, the housing element is essentially a plan, and that plan, uh, came, started coming to fruition, starting in late 2019, uh, leading to an eventual council adoption in September of 2022. And then HCD, or the State Department of Housing and Community Development, issuing a letter of certification for the city in Oc, in October 5th, 2022. From there, the city diligently pursued the action component, which is the implementation, uh, which led to the implementing amendments for rezoning, coming to you all for recommendation back in April of this year. Uh, in July, the city council conducted a study session and subsequently a public hearing, uh, regarding the rezoning. And at that hearing, council adopted several resolutions. You can see the actions listed out there, as well as introduced two ordinances for consideration. One of the more important ones, uh, providing zoning for residential on the housing opportunity sites, in essence, that is the rezoning ordinance. Importantly, one I want to highlight under the resolutions is the initiation of a narrowly-focused amendment to the housing element, which, uh, memorializes the determination that a vote pursuant to Charter Section 423, uh, sometimes referred to as green light, is precluded by state law. The housing element needs to be revised to remove it as an implementing action. So by way of a narrowly-focused amendment, what we're really doing is revising a small portion of Section Three, which is the housing constraints, resources, and affirmatively furthering fair housing. Uh, it's a section that analyzes impediments and barriers to housing and the production of housing in the city of Newport Beach. That narrative would be revised to change the narrative and analysis surrounding that Charter Section, uh, requirement. And then also changing Section Four, which is the housing plan, and that contains all the policy actions, as well as the implementing actions. Uh, that would be to remove Charter Section 423 as a requirement for implementation. So staff circulated that amendment as required by state law, publicly posted it online, and then seven days later, transmitted to HCD for formal review, along with one comment received during that public review period from Mr. Mosher. That was attached to the staff report as attachment number PC six. Uh, subsequently, on August 20th, the city received a letter from HCD confirming that the city's housing element would maintain a status of compliance with the adoption of the amendment, uh, which is not changed since posted and attached to the agenda this evening. So the reason we're here is to get the Planning Commission's recommendation to City Council, assuming you take staff's recommendation to, uh, support and provide a favorable recommendation. Uh, staff would return to City Council on September 24th to amend the housing element and to conduct the second readings on the two ordinances, one being the rezoning, the other being objective design standards, uh, which would then make those effective towards the end of October. Um, and that would complete our rezoning requirement, uh, from the housing element, which is a big, uh, milestone, outside of the coastal zone boundaries. As I said, a very brief presentation. That concludes my presentation. Happy to field any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate that. Uh, any commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Just out of curiosity, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's much, like anybody has a choice in the matter, but what happens if the, just had to care, like, what happens if the Planning Commission City Council denied what would be the ramifications?
Thank you, Commissioner Elmore. Uh, this is done at the behest of the City Council. The City Council has, um, effectively decided that no vote was required, and so we're simply implementing that, so the chances that the council would, um, do an about-face on that is pretty unlikely. Uh, this is a procedural step. The, uh, code requires, you know, general plan amendments to come to this body, so, um, consistent with that requirement, we are doing so. But I think the, the likelihood of the council...
I meant more so, like, what are the state ramifications? If it didn't go through, basically, your non-compliance, so everything that, what is not in compliance, all those standards, then would come back to us from that perspective?
Well, I think the one feature that is unique here is we, we have adopted the six-cycle, cycle housing element. It is certified, and so the one, you know, defining feature here is that whether a vote would be required, and in this case, we would not be requiring the vote. That's the only difference.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments? All right, then, let's, Mr. Rosin, any ex parte communication?
None.
None for me?
None.
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 All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anyone from the audience wish to speak on this item?
Chair Rosin, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. And, uh, since this, uh, relates to our city general plan, I, I think I am obligated to state that I am an appointed member of the city's General Plan Advisory Committee. However, the comments I'm going to make are entirely my own. Uh, I am opposed to, uh, making this change to our housing element. I think our existing housing element truthfully discult, discloses that Newport Beach has a voter approval requirement for any major change to our general plan. This amendment claims, will claim, that the housing element law precludes such votes. It's rather hard to believe that they do prohibit votes of that kind, when they do happen in other cities. Happen successfully in Chino, is going to happen in Yorba Linda, going to happen in Redondo Beach, apparently not in Newport Beach. What it fails to disclose or say is that when back in, it, it fails to disclose that this particular proposal for meeting our state RENA requirement, which we do have to meet, did not come from the state. It came from the City Council, who proposed it to the state in September 2022. And it does not disclose that when they did that, the council told us, the public, and you, the Planning Commission, that at that time, we did not need an EIR. We did not need a green light vote, because as we heard again tonight, the housing element is just a plan, and the EIR and the green light vote would come when we actually were going to amend the land use element. Okay? And the City Council is in the process of amending the land use element. The EIR did materialize rather belatedly, but now we're told that the green light vote doesn't have to happen. Being told that it was not necessary back in September 22, 2022, because the city was not at that time firmly committing itself to anything, now we're told that we're absolutely committed to what the council did back then. That, that's not honest, that's being deceitful. And yes, we do have a RENA requirement we have to meet according to our housing element. Our staff has estimated the requirement we have to meet is to plan for 2,707 units affordable to families with moderate and lower incomes. What the council is in the process of approving without a vote is not a plan simply for that, but it's a plan for much more, and certainly, the voters of Newport Beach have a right to weigh in on that. And I should mention, the vote of the council was not unanimous. Uh, the mayor abstained, and we later heard that the mayor thinks the vote is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any, any other speakers for this item? All right, seeing none. I will, uh, well, I guess, staff, do you wish to have any comments?
Nothing more to add unless you have questions.
Okay. Commissioners, any other, any comments? Yeah, then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Yes, in reading this, and this is, where's the, I guess, to, to do a partial double negative, where's the no, no, where's the no at from, from the state? There's nothing in effect yet, and I get that if green light is overridden by a state, if a, a state mandate, I, I get that, and then that vote would be, I guess, a census done by the city would be negated. But there has been no overriding factor from the state outside of just, you have to follow these RENA numbers, and so that's obviously a big number, but I, I don't, I don't, I don't see where the, the, the overriding factor is from the state yet to basically override a public vote within our city charter. It's almost like usurping a vote, which is concerning to me.
Uh, this, the city has, uh, been sued in this matter, so it will be, uh, a question that would be answered as a part of that litigation.
So basically, this recommendation is for, for us as the, as, as the Planning Commission to recommend to the City Council that there not be a vote, is basically if we just, if we just take it down to the, to the, to the subject of, or the subject matter.
It is eliminating that specific policy action requirement that was set forth in the housing element.
All right. That's something I'm not comfortable with.
Commissioners, any other comments? All right. Hearing that there are no more further comments, does anyone wish to make a motion? Okay, then I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion here to move forward, uh, based on staff's recommendation, uh, to approve this, uh, this item on the six-cycle.
One second.
Okay, call for a vote.
The motion carries 5-1, with Commissioner Lowry voting no.
Okay, moving on. The staff and commissioner items, item five, motions for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none. Item six, report by the Community Development Director, a request for matters for a planning commission member would like to be placed on a future agenda.
Uh, so, nothing much more to add, uh, for the Planning Commission. I just want to note that the Planning Commission meeting of September 19th will be canceled, and the next meeting will be on October 3rd, and we have two variances and one use permit for a restaurant with a parking waiver.
Does anyone from the audience wish to comment on this? All right, seeing none. Our last item, requests for excused absences. Are there any requests for excused absences?
I won't be here on the 3rd.
All right, noted. No further items, then we are adjourned.